The Board of County Commissioners now back in session. Next on the agenda will be Career Source Gulf Coast, Ms. Kim Bowden requests.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Kim Bowden. I'm the Executive Director for Career Source Gulf Coast. And this morning, we have on the agenda a four-year plan. It's a plan that we have to write, even though it's called a four-year plan. Sometimes we write it every two years. It depends on the federal government and the state government and changes that they're making. But the four-year plan is basically a document that gives an overall comprehensive view of how we operate in our region. There's not a lot of new information in there. As we change processes, we add that to the plan when we rewrite it. But there shouldn't be anything in there that's a surprise to you all. As you know, we have a comprehensive center in Panama City, Florida. We have an affiliate center in Gulf County, Florida. And then we have an affiliate center here in Franklin County, Florida, which is the community center by the bridge here. So we've been operating, we feel like it's important to have a presence in every county that we're in, and we've been able to afford to do that with support of our municipalities, our counties, and other partners across the region. So I don't think you'll find anything different in the plan. I do like to, though, whenever I come before the county commissioners, just remind the commissioners of a couple of things. Attached to the plan is our local elected official agreement. Those of you who've known me for a while, I've been in this field for 28 years. I've been the director for 25 years. So I've been around here for a little while. And so you'll know that these local elected official agreements are signed every so often. The last time I think we signed this one was when we O A, the we O A law came into effect to replace WIA at the federal level. So that was probably in 2015, 2016, thereabouts. And the most important thing that I tell commissioners about that local elected official agreement is that the B O C Cs in all three counties that we operate in are the grant recipient, they're the sub-recipient for this grant, and they have liability for the funds that we use. And you can't designate that liability to anyone else. And basically, what that means is that if we do something with funds that we're not supposed to do, and the federal government comes down and says, hey, we're questioning these costs, we think they're disallowed, it's up to our counties to pay the tab for that. So, not that that's pleasant information to share, but I do want to make sure people understand that. We have never had a disallowed cost in this area, but, you know, sometimes it happens because people do crazy things, and sometimes it happens because people just have a misunderstanding. The laws are very complex that govern our money. We probably have 25 funding streams. So there's a big book of how to say no to something, and there's a one-page on the things we can say yes to most of the time. So we're going to do our level best to never have any disallowed costs, but it does happen occasionally in regions. We are one of 24 workforce regions across the state of Florida. As you know, Florida's a very diverse state. We think it's important that our regions reflect the local economy and the local people that we're serving. And so we feel like we have a better chance of doing that with the regions that are the sized that we have. We know that in some states, you might have a region that's 20 counties. So Florida's a little different in that sense, but we think it serves us well. So on to the bylaws. Those are also in the plan, and when you approve the plan, if you so choose to do that, the bylaws will also be approved. We made changes to the bylaws this year. So the significant things that we made changes to is we added that there will be, within 10 days, a notification to the Board of County Commissioners when one of our seats goes vacant for the board. I guess there's been some issues where vacancies have lingered, and sometimes it is difficult to find people to serve on volunteer boards, as you all probably know. So there's a 10-day notice in there. Two other significant changes. We wanted to make sure that you all felt comfortable and had no hesitation about the fact that when you all appoint people to workforce boards, which by federal law is a requirement, that that member understands that they serve at your pleasure. So if they are doing something or reflecting in some way that you don't appreciate, you have every authority to remove them from our board as well. Secondly, there's some laws that are in play right now in the legislature, and in those laws, for a variety of reasons, I believe that there will be language so that local elected officials can remove a director of a workforce board. As it stands now, under state law, the governor can reach in and remove an executive director of a workforce board or a CEO of a workforce board for cause. But it doesn't designate that the local elected officials can. Because I believe that's going to pass, and because I believe you all should have that authority anyway, as local elected officials, we went ahead and put that language into these bylaws, so that if there was a unanimous vote of each of the boards of county commissioners in Bay Gulf and Franklin County, that you could remove me or who is ever in this position for cause. I don't have any anxiety about doing that. I think that that is very normal for local control, that you all should have the ability to do that and act swiftly if you ever needed to do that. So those are the significant changes to the bylaws. Other than that, I would entertain any questions that you have about the plan, the planning process?
Page of the board on any discussion?
I got one question, Commissioner Locke. I was just looking, I can find out where I was at here. Where it said the initial terms are board members?
Mm-hmm.
And then you got all the different categories, private sector. What is CBO for?
Community-based organization.
Okay. I'm looking through here to try to find that, but I never saw it, so I just wanted to ask that.
Yes, sir. That's what that stands for.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Ms. Kim, do we have, currently have people in different positions on the board?
You do. Actually, I'd like to recognize Mr. Ted Mosteller. He's been serving on our board for many, many years, for as long as I've been the director, actually. Betty Crum is another member. We have a vacancy in Franklin County that's been difficult to fill. We need it from the private sector. So normally, the way it works, and in federal law it spells it out, that a business or a trade association would make recommendations to the county commission. In Bay and Gulf County, that's often the Economic Development Alliance. It could be a Chamber of Commerce. But that's under the law, that's how the recommendations should come to you all. In some cases, counties just recommend who they want, and because you're the local elected officials, we would never disagree with that. But, you know, we meet about every other month. Our region is a little bit more difficult, I think, because we're split by a time zone. So Bay Counties and Central, and then my other two counties, Gulf and Franklin, are Eastern Time. We try to make it as easy as possible to meet. We pay for mileage for board members that travel to our meetings, if they're traveling to Panama City for that meeting. And then we video teleconference the meeting from the Gulf Franklin Center in Gulf County. So it's not just on the phone, but you can actually see the parties in either room. If you don't want to attend either of those ways, you can certainly call into the meeting as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else got any questions? Page of the board.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones.
Discussion.
Discussion?
In the motion, Mike, I want to direct staff to advertise for this other position that we're missing on this board, and see if we can get somebody to come forward that would like to be a member from the private sector of the Gulf Coast Workforce Board, and advertising, see if we can fill that other position.
I'll amend my second to reflect that.
Just to declare, Kim, so we're approving the four-year plan, the changes to the bylaws, and advertising for, to fill that vacancy. Does everybody understand?
Okay.
Okay, so we've got a motion on the floor, the first and the second been amended. So to be advertised for that third position. Y'all ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you for your support. We appreciate everything you do for us.
Thank you. Next on the agenda will be Ms. Deborah Velcher, report, C D B G.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Today, I only have-
Let me get your name for the record.
Okay, Deborah Velcher, President of Romelis Planning and Development Services. I only have one item for you today. We advertised for bids and got bids from three different vendors. We've already made one award from this bid package, which was for Annie and William Banks. Now have another award that I'd like to recommend for Paul Sanders, and that would be to purchase a home from Clayton Homes of Panama City in the amount of $74,308.69. And so I'd recommend, this is less than our limit of $75,000. It is not the lowest price model. We did receive a range of proposals, some of which were better quality than others. So what I did was a listing of each of the models that were proposed and the various features, and based on the specifications that the vendors provided. So you could see some quality differences between the different models, and different features, sizes, things of that nature. So I pointed out pros and cons, and as with the banks, Mr. Sanders made a selection of his choice, and so I am recommending that the board approve funding for the purchase for $74,308.69 plus additional funds for the doc stamp and recording fee.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mast, and second by Commissioner Jones. Discussion. Will that go to 75 with the doc fee?
The, no, it will not, but also, that would not be included in the 75 anyway.
Okay. Now, one more question. What do they get in the trailer? Just?
Refrigerator and range, and no washer or dryer, that is not included. And this is based on the federal regulations that we deal with. These are designed to be very energy efficient, which we are also required to do, so we have upgrades to the insulation levels, the SEER, Seasonal Energy Efficiency Rating on the heat pump systems, low E, energy-efficient windows. And in the specs, I sort of upgrade the things that are most important for the durability of the home, the type of the subfloor, and, you know, the cabinets, things of that nature that tend to wear out.
But they get heat in there?
Yes, sir.
Hot water?
Yes, sir.
It gets heat there. Okay, just basic.
These are three-bedroom, two-bath homes that we've been dealing with so far, except for one, we did a two-bedroom, two-bath.
Okay. All righty. Y'all ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I have a question for you. When's Jason Mulder going to get his, be able to get his trailer?
We're expecting the replacement home for Annie and William Banks to maybe arrive this month. That's what we were told to expect. Now, you know, it wasn't a guarantee. So when that arrives, of course, they'll do the setup, and then the banks will have, you know-
Once they, once they see they're getting their trailer, they'll be able to move the trailer to him?
Right. Right, yes.
Because he's ready, I mean, he's set up and ready.
Yeah, that is the plan, and they're aware of the urgency.
Okay.
What about the other fellow?
We, Angela Webster and I are going to see the Creamers this afternoon, if that's your question. I'm not sure which ones. And then also, we're working on contracts for Kathy Hill, who is in the floodplain on Buck Street, and also for Mary Thomas, who is on Ridge Road. The board has approved those two, but they were not in the bid package the way we need to go to the vendors who submitted and get specifics for those two locations. And I expect, hopefully, I'm hoping that we'll have those worked out for your next board meeting.
Okay.
And then there's another one that you recently did, and I'll be working on that one as well, another Banks family.
Okay. What about, did we ever, I know it might not be C D B G between you and Ms. Angela's here in the room, what are, did we ever get anything worked out for Mr. Dennis at all? If not, I mean, I would like to know about it by the next meeting.
That might be Angela's question.
That's fine. The next meeting's fine. I'm not trying to get her, say stuff on the fly.
Yeah, as we did say, though, and as you're recalling, I think that he's not eligible for C D B G because of his income, but I think they have had some communication with him.
Right.
Okay, keep up the good, anybody else got it? Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Next on the agenda will be Secretary of the Coast, Ms. Marjorie Jones.
I have no other report other than what Erin already brought up.
Okay, thank. Next on the agenda will be the County Coordinator, Mr. Michael Marone, report.
We're getting there, Commissioners, we're getting there.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so we are ready at item 10, on page five, so I'm going to skip on to page six, item 11.
On that, on that, that be everything, they going to advertise that, Joe?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep. Let me take that back. There was a pool, I'll talk to her about that, because there was a pool for a part-time that you guys already approved a long time ago that she hired, so we can either pull from that pool or re-advertise to see, board's preference.
I don't want, no.
I would re-advertise.
It best to re-advertise.
Okay, I'll let her know.
No, no.
Yeah, re-advertise, there's a couple more.
I'll let her know.
What channel are you on?
Page 11. Page 6, number 11. Page 6, 9/11. We ready?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, to January 7th meeting, the board was notified that the county received a Florida Department of Transportation signed agreement for the work on Timber Island Road. The $800,000 project includes repaving Timber Island Road from Highway 98 to the Carabel River and building guardrails on the Timber Island Bridge. The board authorized staff to start negotiations with Dewberry Engineers, the county's engineering firm, about the design improvements for this project. County staff and Dewberry agreed to scope of work for $65,579.21. Therefore, Dewberry submitted a contract for the board's approval. I need action to authorize chairman's signature on that contract.
So moved.
Second.
I've been waiting on this.
I got a motion on the floor by two-thirds of the board, unless you, Commissioner Mast, Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Changing to the next challenge, Commissioner Mast, you would say at a previous meeting, Commissioner Parrish asked staff to research the possibility of reapplying for the Florida Department of Transportation's Transportation Alternatives, known as T A, funding program for sidewalk on Highway 98 from Prado to the Ace Hardware driveway in Apalachicola. Attached to my report, that resolution is required as part of the application. I need you guys to authorize the submission of the application and a chairman's signature under resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
And know that Mark and Courtney are up there to Chipley today for another F D O T class. That's how we build up Courtney becoming lab-certified to do F D O T projects in the county. Okay, so it won't be just Mark anymore. Well, she takes the classes and the county's certified, let's put it that way. Something we'd like the two cities to consider at some point. Okay, so on to 13, on Wednesday, January 22nd, I met with Texas A and M representative that we're here to do a Weems site visit as part of the technical assistance program that we received. It's a grant because we're receiving services and not paying for it. It was a very informative conversation as they explained what they have experienced nationally with healthcare, healthcare in rural areas, and I provided some history on Weems from the board perspective. We discussed in more detail what type of outcome the county could expect from their visit and the analysis of the data they were collecting. They agreed to review each of the healthcare proposals, that's under consideration by the county, then sent a report back to the county, reporting, I typed that wrong, weighing in the pros and cons of each proposal. The Texas A and M representatives would like a list of the board's top three healthcare goals to consider while reviewing the proposals. I've summarized, based on past board discussions, what I consider to be the top three healthcare goals. First, access points for healthcare needs throughout the county. Third, a sustainable business model for healthcare in the county. I'm sorry, that was second. Third, the ability to grow and expand additional healthcare services based on the community needs. The Texas A and M representatives would like this list as soon as possible, so they can provide that report to you as quickly as possible.
Page of the board.
So, yeah, I need you guys to discuss, tell me if you like, you don't like, how you want me to change this list, and I'll submit it to Texas A and M with your blessings.
Page of the board.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones. Any more discussion on that?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
All right. Item 14, Weems has received two reimbursable grants through Big Ben Healthcare Coalition. The first is for $8,000 that will be used to purchase simulation equipment to train EMS staff, and the other grant is for $10,000 to purchase equipment to set up a coordination and evaluation center at Weems that will be used during simulations and disaster situations. The Weems Board of Directors is asking that you approve these grants and allow the initial expenditures to be made from the healthcare trust fund, with the reimbursements going directly back into the trust fund. Ms. Sheppi, your plan operation director is here to answer any questions you may have relating to these grants. These grants do not require any match.
What is the reimbursement timetable? I'm sorry, Ms. Chairman.
Go ahead. Come up, Ms. Sheppi, you and Emily.
Good morning, gentlemen. Nicole Sheppi, facilities over at Weems. Would you please repeat your question?
What is the timetable for the reimbursement? After you spend the money and you have receipts where you spent the money, you turn it in, they reimburse it immediately, within a year?
They're saying 30 days.
30 days. So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Burke. More discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item 15, the board is aware, Weems Memorial Hospital reported our operation suffered some $1.1 million in revenue loss due to Hurricane Michael. Mr. Parrish has reported in past meetings that the Florida Department of Emergency Management has approved reimbursing the county, and this is a, I typed this wrong, I'm sorry, $226,000 of the $1.1 million, which should be transmitted later to the county later this month. He actually checked on it for me last week. To date, Weems has carried that loss, along with any revenue loss due to the new roof installation, but has not received any advances from the healthcare trust funds for operation or payroll. With an upcoming payroll and the timing of the funds from F D E M, Weems requests that the board authorize $150,000 advance from the $226 F D E M funds. When the funds are received later this month, the county will transfer the $150 back to the healthcare trust fund and forward the remaining $76,000 to Weems.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by two, Commissioner Burke and Commissioner Mast. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Commissioners, these two items would have been presented to you by your C E, your interim C E, but he is attending a conference on hospitals and healthcare yesterday and today. But he'll be back tomorrow for the meeting. So based on, I'll say this, there's some comments made earlier about the financials. The audit should be completed here directly shortly, and the C P A that's doing the audit is planning to come here and present the audit to this Board of County Commissioners. So in case you have any questions about funds and anything relating to Weems and their financial situation, you can ask the auditor. If you can't trust him, who can you trust, right? And one more thing, tomorrow's special meeting, remind, reminding you guys about tomorrow's special meeting, you have Mr. Mark O'Brien and Jim Coleman. They represent a partnership of T M H Alliant. They'll be here tomorrow to speak to the board directly about their proposal. It's not necessarily anything new that they're talking to the board about, but there's been a lot of, let's say, questions about what T M H role actually is, and I think Mark wants to address those situations and get, and feel any questions from the board. You'll have to, where Attorney Schule and I usually sit, you'll have, sitting there will be your interim C E and the chairman of the hospital board. They will represent the entire hospital board to ask any questions they may have. It starts at 10, Commissioners, not 9, at 10.
In the morning?
Tomorrow, right in here.
Mr. Chairman.
Discussion. Go ahead, both of you.
I'm first.
Go ahead.
This right here?
Yes, sir.
It's bears are our neighbors, too, down on Alligator Point. They rent the houses down there. The people down there would like, the rental people, if they could just put one of these in the houses when they rent it, to what to do with the garbage, if it was, you know, if you could contact someone.
Okay.
You still talking about the children, what to do with the garbage cans? They go to leaving, and bears, ain't it, and spreading all over the road down there?
Okay. Hey, you want me to pass this on to the?
See if the realtors, they can put it in their box, you know, in their houses when they rent it?
Paul Parker, that one down there?
Yeah.
Whoever does the renting, see if they can put them in their houses when they rent it.
I got you, sir. I got you.
They go to Mayor, Alligator Point, right there.
Yeah.
Allen Park.
There you go. That'd be good, the mayor.
Just give it to me, officer.
You got one of those little cars like a post office using it.
Mr. Chairman, let's talk about the opportunity tomorrow, that we're going to be hearing from Mark O'Brien. You know, it's been talked about, that our commission and hospital board of directors is kind of kicking the can down the road and delaying, delaying, delaying. The most valuable asset in this county is the health of our people. And we, in my opinion, as a board, as a, of commissioners, have the duty and responsibility to be prudent buyers of healthcare and what the actions of healthcare are here in our I support our hospital board in gathering as much information as possible. Now, one of the best things is, is that we never issued a request for proposal for management services. So we have the opportunity to ask and re-ask and re-ask questions of people who are providing services for us or proposals for us, to get as much information as possible. And Mr. O'Brien is going to be coming tomorrow to add to that list of options that we will be considering, and I think it's a good thing, and I'm looking forward to that. And I just want the folks of Franklin County to know that we have traction. We are moving on the complete deliberate review of our healthcare systems in the entire county, and this is just one more entity that a responsible board is doing for you, the people in Franklin County regarding healthcare.
Well, we gave them, we gave figured out the same opportunity.
We did, and they were re-asked to come again, weren't they? So keeping an open door.
It was, they said they were going, didn't have no difference.
Okay.
You agree with me?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
All right, Commissioners, so item 16, we addressed, the Second Amendment Resolution first thing this morning, so we're to item 17. Your current ship policy is to rotate bids rather than advertise for ship repairs and rehabilitation projects. This policy was in place due to the limited number of contractors that were participating in the ship program. Since the list of those contractors has grown to six, and in an effort to assist as many clients as possible with available funding, Ms. Lori Switzer Mills, your ship administrator, would like the board to authorize a change to that policy going back to advertising for bids. This policy change would apply to both the hurricane housing recovery program, that's that plus, million-plus you just got, excuse me, and the ship rehabilitation repair program or strategy, as they call it. She would like the board to- She would like the board to exclude emergency repair programs from this bid requirement so that those simple repairs could be addressed quickly. So we have more contractors now, so we wanna go back to advertising, cause with advertising, you know, we get the best bang for our buck. That's what she's basically asking the board to, to allot.
Pleasure to the board.
So moved.
Thank it.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Perry, second by Commissioner Mast. All in favor? All opposed, that pass unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, I wanna hear something about this. Uh, Michael, I'd, I'd like for you to get together some information for us.
Yes, sir.
About what it would take to move ships, uh, inspections to your office.
Okay.
So the county P&amp;Z is doing the inspections.
Okay, so you're, you're billing officially and your new inspector, okay.
Yep.
I'll have that at the next meeting, sir.
Who, who's currently doing it, man?
I think it's a retired contractor that does it, uh, for the ship program.
So is there a mechanism for, like, our building inspector to be paid for these?
Yes, yes, there is, yes. The ship allows you to pay, uh, the inspector, I would have to see if it's from the admin funds or from the program fund, but yes.
Yeah, from the program fund.
It is, right, Commissioner, yeah.
It'll help fund their, uh, their budgetary needs and planning zone, you expect to pay in two different.
It would.
Then you get a better inspection too, Mr. Smokey.
Okay.
That's what I meant.
Yeah, cause it's been some, like Ricky says, it's been some difficulties getting some of this stuff worked out.
Anyway, if you could bring it back to us.
I will, at the next meeting, sir, if that's okay.
That's fine with me.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm writing, I'm almost through. Slow writer. All right, so the, we already dealt with, uh, we have, I have two information items, and I think it's important that I read, I'm sorry, did we vote? We're good? I cut you guys off, did I, okay.
Yeah, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
I got a fellow in my dip. House was leaking. So you went in there and gutted it, because there was mold in it. Put in for ship, they had told him he could get the ship, but now since he gutted, they come out, they, it's too much work to do, but. He was asking them to put a top on it, go for the twenty-five, and he would go do the rest of it, weekly, monthly, and stuff like this. They can't afford to get no loan, but they wanted, they said they can't do that.
Well, how about we get together after the meeting, so I don't, I don't wanna state his name and address publicly, and then I have Lori investigate that. Well, I'll, I'll ask her about it, get some information for you.
Yeah, but he, he was doing the work, but then he put in for him. They approved him. Up to twenty-five, they ain't know he had gutted the thing. He had to gut it, cause they would pull him over, he had to take all that stuff out.
Yeah.
All that sheet rock out. Matter of fact, he called him.
I guess what you're, yeah, and what, what you're asking is that, uh, that, that twenty-five is used, as he uses his own money to help. Okay, I'll, yeah, we'll get that information to you. Okay, Commissioners, so item eighteen, I'm gonna hold this up to you, hold it up to Royce, and hold it up to the public, our cool little sign. So at your last meeting, Ms. Pat O'Connell, who's here, she's, she's the chair of your, of your, um, Complete Count Committee for the Census. She introduced Mr. Lloyd Childery, Waste Pro's municipal marketing director of government affairs to the board, and explained that Mr. Childery, on behalf of Waste Pro, made a donation to the county, uh, well, through the, the Census Complete Count Committee. What, uh, Mr. O'Connell and Mr. Childery failed to do is explain that he donated two thousand dollars to the Complete Count Committee to assist with advertising, banners, posters, et cetera, to assist with promoting the be counted. Got that, Royce? Be counted message to every resident of Franklin County. Oh, wait, let me turn the cuff too, get as much out of this as possible. On behalf of the board, I would like to thank, uh, Waste Pro, especially Mr. Childery, for that large donation to this very important cause. In addition to that, uh, Pat informed me that Dewberry has committed about five hundred dollars to help with that cause too, and so has Mr. Dan Garlick. And David kindly writes an article, uh, in the newspaper every week about the census, cause we need to keep that front and center so everybody knows how important it is to vote. At some point, there's a bunch of other, uh, people, uh, that, that's, uh, participating, not through money, but doing other things, and Pat's gonna have a complete list that she'll present one day to the board. So I just say this to the board, so you guys could thank all these people that are helping with this cause and promoting this very, very important, uh, thing that we gotta do.
Well, we wanna thank that Pat, cause you gathering them, you getting them together, you doing a good job.
Oh, yeah, buddy.
You doing a great job.
She hasn't even asked for a commission yet, imagine that, so, yeah.
Keep up the good work.
Man stand on top of it.
Oh, he supposed to do something.
And Commissioners, that ends my report, this afternoon, is it afternoon?
Yeah.
About two minutes afternoon. Close, close enough.
Hey, y'all, anybody got anything else for Mr. Marone? Okay, keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Marcus Schuler, county attorney report.
Commissioners, I've got one action item for you concerning my request that the board authorize me to utilize Mr. David Theriak, your outside counsel on land use planning matters, on two different issues. One involves quarter passy lawsuit, or the two lawsuits filed with Mr. Quarter Passy, mainly to involve potential post-hearing matters and subsequent proceedings that we have to deal with in, in that litigation. And I also want to, uh, work with Mr. Theriak to bring back to you a proposal to create a new process on how you can consider handling future requests for land uses. Land use changes, rezoning changes, uh, actually would apply also to requests for variances and special exceptions. As part of representing the county in this, uh, lawsuit filed on Mr. Quarter Passy, it's come to my attention that in the last legislative session in two thousand nineteen, the Florida legislature made an important substantive change in the law, uh, basically creating a new provision for awarding attorney's fees to prevailing parties. My read of the statute did, uh, there is a way to avoid that prevailing party lawsuit provision, uh, but we would have to bring back to the board a, a, a procedure for you to consider to essentially, uh, use a special master to hear, uh, future matters involving land use changes, rezonings, and potentially also variances and special exceptions. But I, I need board authorization before I can bring them in as co-counsel to discuss the matters I've just described.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mast, second by Commissioner Jones. Any more discussion on that?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is your cover, both correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct. Now, the two, two quarter passy lawsuits, or two lawsuits filed by Mr. Quarter Passy, um, but I'm, I'm mainly interested in, um, this issue involving the special master.
Okay.
That, that will affect, uh, really will have any impact on Mr. Quarter Passy's lawsuits, he's already filed his lawsuits. The circuit court case potentially would involve a claim for potential prevailing party attorney's fees, that applies equally to the county as well as to Mr. Quarter Passy, but I'm thinking more about matters moving into the future.
Okay.
Any more discussion?
Yes, uh, in the second paragraph of, of your action item here, it says, the lawsuit filed by Mr. Ward.
That's wrong.
That's right, that's just a typo.
That's just a typo.
Okay.
Mr. Ward has not filed a lawsuit.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry about that, Commissioner. I was preparing this after nine o'clock last night, so my apologies.
No excuses.
Any, anybody else? All right, y'all ready, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimous.
Typically, I don't go over informational items with the board, but there, but I, I do want to, uh, for at least a couple of matters. One, at your last board meeting, when I brought back to the board a discussion on the, your approval of two matters. One was your approval of the existing legal description for the fenced-in area at Bay City Work Camp, and then also your consideration of the additional acreage outside of that fenced area that had been requested by the sheriff. The board's discussion, um, pretty rapidly went to an issue that was of greater importance to the board, my apologies for not recognizing that. But you wanted to have, for me to have a discussion with the sheriff that there would be no use of county employees or county equipment, discussion of no subletting of the property for these county employees while they're on the county clock. I, I did have that conversation with the sheriff, uh, and I have informed you that as my item number two, which is my first informational item. Not asking the board unless, unless the board has any other direction today, I wasn't necessarily asking you for board action this morning. But I did want to inform you that, uh, my, my understanding of the conversation with the sheriff is he's got no issue with one potential exception of, of having county employees, county equipment out at Bay City Work Camp during their time while working for the county. But he did inform me that, uh, as he does with other five oh one, uh, C nonprofit corporations, that his sheriff's work crew does provide services to those nonprofits, and that, of course, would involve having, uh, some paid county staff member supervising them. You know, that could be certainly seen as being in contrary to the board's instructions at the last meeting. So I just wanted to inform you of that, uh, and my intention is to bring this up, uh, unless the board has other directions, I would bring this up at a future meeting for you to give me some directions and instructions on how to proceed. And then the other matter, informational item only, is item number four. I'm skipping over item number three, so, which Commissioner Bolt's in your district, so if you want to talk about that, we, we certainly will. Uh, but item number four concerns the Saint George Island Everleigh District, uh, that future public hearing is coming up at your first meeting in March. Uh, one of the, the, the material issues for discussion in the last public hearing was the board's, uh, insightful question of, well, exactly how many lots are affected by this C four residential zoning category on, within the Everleigh District. My understanding of the facts has proven to be not just mistaken, I would say badly mistaken. I was under the belief that we had something less than seventy C four residential structures within the Everleigh District on the island, and approximately about that same number of vacant C four lots. I, I went back after the board's last meeting, I made two counts of the, the C four zone lots within that district area. My first count came back at two hundred and ninety total C four zoned lots, and that would also include the, the roughly seventy that had been built. My second count came up with two hundred and eighty-nine, so it is, is a much larger number than I was under the belief of and what I've been representing to the board and the public. So I wanna take this opportunity, uh, to correct that, that factual mistake. Again, not asking the board to take any action item, but I did want to inform you of those two informational items. And that concludes my report, and I'm, I'm prepared to answer any questions directed by the board.
Out there on that Bay City Work Camp, he supposed to do the thing we, like, we had in the open, right?
The board has, in concept, I think, agreed to convey the land as opposed to leasing the land. I think you've made that decision based on my recommendation that you not retain ownership of the property. I'm, I'm concerned with the county, uh, if you retain ownership of the, the, the real estate, you then would potentially, uh, be subject to claims as a landowner, even though you're not operating the Bay City Work Camp. But at this point, the, the total amount of conditions and limitations and restrictions imposed by the board has not been finalized. So you're perfectly free as a board to add in this additional, uh, I wouldn't really call it additional, but I would say it's more of a clarifying comment at your last meeting that the board does not want, um, there to be any county equipment or county employees at the property while they're on the clock working for the county. That, that you have not lost control of that decision at, at this point.
We already have done that, right?
Yes, I, I, I thought that I had written that up clearly enough that the county would not provide any ad verum support, uh, for this project, but, uh, my read from the board's comments at the last meeting is I needed to clarify that further, so I have gone back and clarified, uh, the written document to reflect the board's comments at the last meeting. I've had that discussion with the sheriff, and with that, the exception of having some work crews out there, he's, he's perfectly fine with the board's restriction.
Okay.
But I also think it's fair to state that having work crews out there with paid county employees would, would, to all appearances, be in violation of the board's instructions. So all I can do is come back and inform you, and at some point ask for you to give me some further directions on what to do.
Cause they gonna have to have an OC, or?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, they got, have somebody watching.
And what does that lead to, potentially? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I should have asked permission, but. I think you open Pandora's box. When you allow one, you know, you don't know if they're there cutting grass, or, or what they doing, and when they there, and how often they there. You understand what I'm saying? Anyway, this is something folks should think about today, right?
Yes, sir, I'm not asking the board for any.
Everybody just think about it.
Action today, I just thought it was an important enough issue to bring back to you publicly, uh, because you had, you had asked that question at the last meeting, and I wanted to bring back to you my understanding of the conversation with the sheriff. And again, he, he said he had no problem with the restriction, but he didn't want to disclose to the board that, you know, like he does with other nonprofits, he would intend to use his sheriff's department work crew, providing, uh, cutting the grass, making repairs.
Some of the people that's in there ought to provide some of it.
They, they can work.
That's what I'm saying, they, they pretty much gonna get a free ride.
I thought that was, that was starting to start with.
And they could cut the grass, and they could do a lot of things to improve their skill sets, so once they complete, uh, rehab, and they got some skills to go out and get a job.
We ain't sending, they ain't going there to live and sleep all day.
I don't know, something folks should think about.
Yeah, it is.
Okay. Anybody got anything else for? Mr. Schuler? Doing a good job, Mr. Schuler, keep up the good work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Public, no, it's Commissioner coming. Thank you. Commissioner coming.
I think we had a good legislative day.
It was good.
Yep.
That's good.
It was very good.
That's good. But no more comments?
He's coming, though.
Meeting adjourned. It's time for a possum sandwich.